I'd like to thank everybody for attending the school board meeting for tonight. And I would like everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Jerry, what do you need for us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, once again, welcome to the Central School District Board Meeting. Comments from the community are entertained during the time designated under Communications, Public Comments. If you wish to speak to the Board, please fill out a comment card and turn it in to the Board Secretary. Raise your hand. Or to the Board Chair at the beginning of the meeting. Speaker's comments in this forum are limited to three minutes, but the Board welcomes additional information in writing. Personnel laws prohibit the Board from hearing public complaints about an individual in an open meeting. All complaints must go through the Board's approved process as outlined in Board Policy KL. This form may be found at our website or by calling the District Office. Typically, a speaker's comment is taken under advisement to allow time for the Board to review an issue. However, the Board Chair or other Board members may ask a speaker for additional information or may convey to the speaker some information that addresses their comment. Please note on the speaker card if you would like to receive follow-up communication, and as so, what avenue is preferred. Thank you for your attendance at this meeting in the Central School Board. And now, would you like to explain the agenda?
Yes, so we have just a shift in the consent agenda that you'll see with an update there. We did get a request for a travel approval that is going to happen in two weeks, and so we wanted to make sure that it was on the Board Packet for Mr. Thistle's class. They're going up to Seattle, Washington for a conference. So again, you'll see that in the consent agenda. You'll also see the documentation that came with it. So I just wanted to make you aware of that for that change. The other thing which I'll do in my report, we do have information about enrollment because we wanted to give you the most up-to-date, and so I'll go into that information as well in my report. So there is that addition of documentation at the table for you this evening.
Thank you. And at this time, do we have any communications cards over there? And so, we're up to Mr. Love coming to speak to us.
Can you guys hear me good? Yeah. So, I'm Andrew Love, Senior. Went through this last time. So today was the start of our homecoming week, so we had an assembly today before lunch where we just ran through a bunch of different activities. Everybody was really pumped up. It was pretty much like CenturyLink in the Panther Pit, so a lot of energy. We have our homecoming activities after school. At 7:00 is when we're starting, so everybody can participate after practices. So I'm gonna go to the volleyball, guys playing volleyball tonight. And then, we have our football game. Crescent Valley's here at 7:00 on Friday night. And then, we have our homecoming dance from 9:30 to midnight. So we wanted to give the football players an extra chance to come to the dance and participate after cleansing themselves and getting dressed and stuff. So we talked to the two police departments and bumped back curfew 30 minutes so that we can give everybody a chance to participate. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. And how about ladies from the Power Peers? They're all grouped and ready to go. Bring a chair with you, one of you.
Hello, how are you guys?
Great.
So we just wanna give you guys an update on the Power Peer class. A group of the Power Peers has formed a YAC, which is a Youth Advisory Committee in partnership with the Central Health and Wellness Center. Last spring, a number of our students went to the YAC Summit in Portland where they found out that most of the schools in Oregon with health centers have YAC. Kim Prozer from the Central Health and Wellness Center meets with our YAC group on Mondays during Power Peers class. And today, we went on a tour for the Health and Wellness Center.
And then, we had our pantry project, and that's been going really good. There's been at least 53 students have used it during the past two weeks. And then, we'll be picking up more food tomorrow at the El Corian Food Break.
Next Thursday, we will be launching our year-long campaign to promote mental health awareness in partnership with the Polk County Family and Community Outreach. We have been working on this since last spring and are excited about the launch. We will share more details with you in November.
And then, that's it for this month, or last month, actually. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Once again, it says public comments, but we already talked about that. And so, do we have a CEA rep?
Hello, I am Chris Jordan. I am the building rep for CHS High School and Central High School. And I have some things that are going on that we wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of. The Language Academy is working hard combining drawing and writing in English. Recently, they have drew their dream house and described it. The class is planning a unit on Oktoberfest and a visit to Baumann's Farm in October. We believe that our beginning students learn by doing, so we're providing field trips and ample opportunities for them to use their English in a safe environment. The American Government classes will have about 70 senior students complete their voter registration next week. They do this about the same in second semester as part of their political parties, voting, and elections units. The sophomore Global Studies students are making awesome world physical maps from scratch. There are currently 17 seniors taking dual-credit college writing in Rachel Duncan's class through the Willamette Promise Program. They'll visit Lou's Hammersley Library in October for a field trip on research training through our partnership with Willamette Promise. And in doing so, they're attempting credit in three levels: Writing 115, Writing 121, and Writing 122. There are also 20-plus CHS Theater students who attended the free student dress rehearsal performance of Almost May at the Pentacle Community Theater on Wednesday, September 27th. This was a great opportunity that allowed our students to experience more live art and to write up their drama reports for classes like Theater Production, Makeup, and Thespian Club. Club advisors Jeff Rick and Rachel Duncan attended the performance where Rachel was the volunteer coordinator for free educational shows year-round. Avid is up and running, and we have already seen success from our students as it applies to them taking personal responsibility in their education. We have engaged in many classroom activities to promote successful learning behaviors, a family atmosphere, collaboration among peers, higher-level thinking, and becoming aware of students' own strengths and weaknesses. Every student has an avid binder that they take to every class. Students are required to keep all notes and assignments in their binder in the appropriate spot. We grade these binders every Friday. A key component of successful student is one that is well-organized. We instill this in our avid students every day with planner checks, assignment checks, and with learning logs. And the last thing I'm gonna let you guys know about is this last weekend, Rosanna Larson, Lori Ishmansky, Scott McCannell, and Ben Gorman took a group of 25 students to Ashland to see amazing performances of Shakespeare's The Merry Wives of Windsor and Homer's The Odyssey. The trip went off without a hitch. The students had a wonderful time, and they learned a lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. And Denise?
Okay.
No? Okay. All right. So administrative report that says none, so we're down to Cease.
Thank you, everyone. Your report is included in your packet this evening, and no changes. Again, I think I kinda mentioned we're changing the timing, so there is no financial report. It would've been a whole week of activity since the last one, so next month, we'll get on the regular schedule of those reports. And a good summary of what our maintenance looked like this summer. As you all know, our major project, the Ash Creek Boiler, was completed in record time. Again, great partnership with those vendors. Those guys are busy. They can have all the work they need. Luckily, we were able to work with our maintenance staff to just be able to match the timing that they needed to get that project done, so it's great. I would invite you to go to the Townish Cafeteria. Not sure you wanna do it in the middle of the middle-school lunch, 'cause it's a little wild thing there. But it is, we've done a nice job sort of accommodating the growth that we needed to there. It was one of the bond projects, and although we didn't get to do all the things that we would've done, we were able to pull up enough money to get some of the activities, some of the project done, to expand the cafeteria and make it much safer and more secure for staff to keep an eye on kiddos while they eat there. So that was kind of a neat project. And some anticipated, unanticipated flooring replacement. Ash Creek, we have been in a flooring replacement program at 15 years of age. A school that was built on a wetlands does have expansion contraction in its flooring, but we did not plan on seaming the cafeteria flooring tiles, but we ended up having to do that this year. And IES Library got partially new carpeting this year, so. Couple of extra things we had room in the budget for with savings from other projects. And the kind of one, I think, project left undone at this point is we've paid an area of parking out here in front of this building. Some of you have been here during some bigger trainings or big activities that have gone on here, and parking is at a premium. We have that space right along the fence towards the softball field that was gravel, so we were able to get that paved over so that we can paint some parking stripes there and increase our public parking when there are large meetings. Those were our projects for the summer. Are there any questions about those?
So can you tell us a little bit about the CHS roof?
The CHS roof continues to be an elusive question. We have finally had a new engineering report done, and we are awaiting the results of that to see exactly how much of that roof they think we could replace and make a difference. This is, the biggest problems are at the seam between the old building and the new building. And of course, that's where you'd expect there would be a problem in roofing. And they had done some smaller fixes when it was installed. Those fixes are getting to be, you know, seven, eight, nine, 10 years old, and so we are trying to find out whether it's a $75,000 roof or a $150,000 roof problem.
So, but we do have a solution in mind. It's like we've played around with it for a number of years.
That's it. We were patching. We were, we had the roofers who roofed the new part of the high school had been out there five times a year trying to help us find solutions. We finally called in engineers to say, what will it cost to do a permanent fix? And we're waiting by costing on that.
Any other question for us? Says you got a transportation update for us.
Well, and I didn't invite our transportation manager. Our new transportation manager has been super busy, so he will come and report in the future about some great new projects he's undertaken. They are just efficiencies in how we do things there that have been amazing because of his experience in other school districts. But also, our transportation manager, Brian Winchester, has been, we, when we brought him on, one of the extra duties sort of we've given him is to start being, doing some facilities reviews for us. That's another area of expertise that he has. And I'm looking at the co-retirement of our entire maintenance department in a few years. So getting an expert in here to kind of assess our needs, our operations, how that really works, and what we're going to need to do to replace our veterans is something he's been helping on. And as part of that role, he's been starting to meet with community partners, even in the transportation area. There have been a couple of front-page articles about transportation concerns at MES, and recently, a little bit of a concern about the Gem Club and Hoffman intersection. And so Brian has started to meet with partners about that as well. So that got him a pretty busy guy, but you'll get to meet him and hear reports from him at his next opportunity.
So just a comment. I was at a meeting today, and there was a comment made about the stuff from the eclipse, about the transportation. And I may mention that, you know, there was the school district bus system. Just give them kudos for that. We're still hearing good things about everything that, you know, people were able to go from the college over to Independence for the different activities and stuff, and we're hearing good things about their service.
Good, thanks. I will pass that on.
We're down to the superintendent's monthly update enrollment and district calendar.
Yeah, so I have a few things. So you've got on your table a packet of information that will have a few graphs. These should look familiar to you. I'm gonna get to those in a second. Just a couple of updates. I've been walking through the schools. I have over the last month on both Wednesdays and Fridays, and we'll continue to do that throughout the year. It just gives me an opportunity to connect and see both the teaching and learning that's taking place throughout the school district. Obviously, I get to meet a lot of students. I get great questions of who I am, and so that's fun to just be able to have those with, from a kindergarten all the way to a 12th grader. So it's just a great opportunity to really see and dive into the great teaching and learning that we do have going on in the district. I was also part of, and you'll get more information as we go through, the kickoff meeting tied the trauma-informed grant that will continue for the next two years. And so we had that and have signed some initial contracts, but again, there's some things that we're working through still that, so our final contract, we're really having addendum to our current contract, and then we'll continue to work with the different organizations that are tied to this and get that two-year grant, and we'll continue forward with that. So really good conversation. Some of that is my background, so it's great to see what the high school is doing and how we might look to that in the future. And then, I have started to, and I'm gonna share a little bit of this, but this past week, I've had the opportunity to really start to dive into the data from the Dreams Activity that we did not only at the retreat, but that was done with the staff. So at our PLC, you are gonna see some data that is really starting to clearly articulate some things from the staff side that are important. And so that's gonna be a great conversation for us to have on the 16th, as well as a few other pieces. So let's talk about the enrollment on. Within this packet, you have, as you have in the past, there's three pieces here. The first page is the overall enrollment. The second page is specific to elementary, and the third page is specific to the secondary schools. And I pulled data today, so this is current data. You can see that our breakdown of our total enrollment is at 3287 as of today, which is precisely what was projected by the, as you guys went through this process last year. And so, again, I think that's an important piece to point out. A couple of key points that I wanna just be clear. You can see at the elementary level that we are down, specifically, we're down 27 students when you compare it to last year. At the secondary level, we're flat. We do have a loss of three students, but again, in the overall picture, that, for me, that tends to be a flat, no growth. You can see this is obviously tighter enrollment in the past, and we do realize that these projections are closer to our actual than it has been in the past. We are, right now, right on with what it is. Just to give you, again, part of that, I know in the discussions that you had last year, a lot of this was tied to the Portland State and the report that came out that was talking about across Oregon. You were starting to see enrollment across the region start to drop. And again, you are seeing a little bit of that within that piece. Just to give you some numbers, so that loss of 30 students is approximately a $200 to a $225,000 loss for us. So again, I just wanna articulate of just great work from the previous administration and you all in the projections, because right now, we are right on to where we believe we will be. We'll continue to monitor it. I will probably bring back a report to you in November, and then they just come back again in January, and we'll just keep working that way, maybe look at it quarterly for the future. But again, I just wanted to just share with you where we are, because again, it's not, people may think 30 is not a lot, but when you're looking at that, that's again, a $200,000 to $225,000 loss because of those students not being enrolled. Questions about enrollment?
So, do we have any concerns about the elementary drop? Is that a drop that's gonna propagate on through the system? Is it in kindergarten, or is it spread out over the?
It's a combination. Every grade level, for the most part, at the elementary has dropped. K is more significant than the others. I will, what I'll do in our Friday report, I'll send you, 'cause I did do a, I have a breakdown of what that is, and I can put that in there, just so you guys have that information as well, to see what we were last year compared to what we are this year. And you can at least see the difference from that perspective. But, you know, again, from the report, 'cause I have read it, I mean, it is going down that direction. Both Cease, in conversation with Cease, we have also talked about looking at potentially in the future of, do we work with a consultant to say, what are projections? Can we really look at what it's gonna look like in the next few years? I think that's a conversation that we need to have and really say, do we need to come in and really take a deeper dive into what our enrollment might look like in the next, I'm gonna say, three to five years? Because again, that report and the way that report was shared is, right now, we are trending in that direction of the concern of dropping enrollment. And so again, I think this is just a starting point. I think that this is a continued conversation that we need to have as we go through, obviously, this year and in the future years ahead. Any other things that you two wanna add to that piece of it?
I think the one thing that when Don was asking about kindergarten being smaller, we're seeing smaller classes at our primary than they are at our upper elementary, and we are seeing a bit of a bubble of larger class sizes moving through our system. So the size of our classes at our primary are more like what they were two or three years ago, on average.
Okay. That might be something we, what I'd like to see against class sizes by elementary. I know last year, there was a public comment and a, you know, question about rebalancing across Ash Creek and Monmouth, and I haven't heard anything this year, but it might be good just to also generate, if you have that.
Okay, yep, we can do that.
Forward to class sizes. Question on the trauma-informed.
Sure.
And if I remember that grant, wasn't, there were two high schools, one us and then a controlled high school, or?
No, I don't think it's a controlled high school. It is Tuolotin.
There were two high schools in the program, and then they did have some other controlled schools that were not selected for the pilot money that they were going to use as a comparative data.
That's where I was going. It'd be interesting to, as we're renewing the grant, just to, at some point, get a report and actually see if there is any data as compared to where we were or where a high school that hasn't done what we've been doing. Just so we could see something objective around, is it making a difference? I suspect that it is, but I don't.
You may recall, one of the tenants of the grant was attendance, and does trauma-informed practices increase attendance at schools? So, you know, I'm sure that data, they're still in the initial stages of it.
Yeah. We'll think about that.
The other piece, any other questions either about enrollment before I move on to the next item, which is focus on the district calendar? So just to give a little background, this, the district calendar is tied to specifically elementary grading. So it came to the district's attention by several teachers that the grading periods for the 17, 18 school year were different than the year before and didn't match the current report card. So as an example, last year, the report card for elementary was on three trimesters, but the calendar has been moved to four different grading periods for this year. Again, that was adopted last spring. So in discussions, obviously, with cabinet or elementary principals, I did meet with union leadership to follow up on that, and I also asked the principals to gather information from some of their teachers. I just wanted to get a clarification on the grading process, what it would look like, because again, there has been some confusion with that piece of it. So we are going to be moving forward with the four grading periods as followed, and then I'm gonna share just where we are and some of the next steps. So the first and third grading periods that are on the calendar, so if you look at the calendar, the November 3rd, I'm gonna say slash 6, because it falls a Friday, Monday for the grading day, and then April 13th is the grading day for the third grading period. Those will be done, those will be considered progress reports. We will use the current report card, but again, I'll talk further about that. We're gonna share those during the conferencing times, because those grading periods do align to the conferences, and then for those families that do not attend the conferences, then we will mail those home. And then, when you look at the second and the fourth grading period, what I'm gonna call sort of the full formal report cards, the second period falls the 31st of January and February 1st is the grading day, and then June 13th, obviously, the last day of school, we will, last day? Yeah, that's correct, last day of school. And that will be when our formal grading reports will go out to families. We're gonna be working, and we will be working with this tomorrow with the principals, we will be working with, as well as the elementary teachers, to align the standards of the current report card. So as an example, this first period right now, we have to do some work to say, okay, which of these standards that are on the report card have we, you know, started to work through and our kids have those pieces? There's gonna be some standards that are not gonna be applicable, so we wanna make sure and work with our teaching staff, because they're the ones on the ground in the schools to be able to give us that information. So we're gonna work with them to align those pieces throughout the year for all of the grading reporting periods. I wanna do this because this is our first communication to clarify this, because we do wanna make it crystal clear to both, because we have had questions coming from both staff as well as, you know, again, parents that are also part of our staff and just getting that clarification. So this is our first communication, and we'll be working with the teachers and then obviously getting and working with the elementary principals, so they have talking points as we continue to work through this. And we'll be working with them tomorrow of what that process is gonna look like with the teachers. We have some tentative plans that Dr. Vickery has sort of outlined for us, and so we're gonna go through those tomorrow and then ask the principals to go back, and we'll work with them and their teachers. Again, I think this is important to just clarify publicly, so we are on the same page, and we'll have that communication, and just know that we're gonna continue to work with our teachers and principals to align that. And again, this is for this school year, and just wanna be clear about that. So we have a clear picture in regards to the calendar as we move forward through the rest of the school year. So questions?
So next year, we'll go back to?
I think that's a larger conversation to have. And we will continue that conversation.
So the next up is board report from myself. So you'll notice that it makes mention of an OSBA nonprofit discussion. We'll be taking that up probably at the November meeting, and that came out, you wanna explain a little bit about that, because you're talking to Brian about it?
Yeah, so I just don't have information yet from Brian Hungerford. He's following up for us. So we received in the, via email, that OSBA is, in regards to charter schools, that if and when we were to have charter schools, that they actually cannot contract to do any work with OSBA, that they would have to work with their local school district and contract through us. So I have asked Brian, we just sort of looked at things and said, okay, what?
What's the risk here?
What are we, what's the concerns of, you know, again, if we do have a charter school, and then we have to, they work through us? Is it our contract? Is it their contract? And just getting some clarity in that. So again, I reached out to Brian, which he just is in the process of working through that and hasn't gotten a chance to get back to me. So I think it's important for, we think it's important. So, I think it's important for, we think it's important for, to have that conversation so we know where we might stand, should that happen within the school district, before he makes the vote to OSBA for that process, because again, they're looking to go to that nonprofit status. I'm not sure what the background is that, so Brian is working to find that out for us, so I can make sure that we have that information to share with all of you.
Part of the concerned discussion is, they would be receiving services through us.
Correct.
And so, if something would happen where there was some kind of a lawsuit or something filed against them, would that come back on us? And so, there's some discussion questions that need to be asked before we just approve this recommendation from OSBA, just a little bit of follow-through. And it seemed like a pretty open-ended gap, so we're just wanting more information. And they actually want an answer in November, so we definitely will have to be on board to give you the information for November. So, the next thing up is the, our next board meeting will be on the sixth of November at six-thirty, and we have a PLC meeting on the sixteenth, and you will be discussing...
We've got a couple of things that we're going to be discussing. We're going to go through the data, because I think that's an important piece. I think a lot of that time, I'm going to get that to you guys next week, so you do have it, the hard copy at least, to see the analysis that I've done thus far. I also think it's a time we are going to, we had originally talked at our retreat about the board operational procedures, and I know that there's a draft that has been started, so I think it's important that we also continue to have that conversation. And we do probably need to also start having that conversation. I know I've only been here two months about my evaluation, so again, there's some key things that we just sort of need to start working through as we get through the year, because it's almost, it's October already. Who knew, right? It is October, October 2nd. So, again, just keeping things on the forefront as we continue to move forward and develop as a team.
And our PLC is at six-thirty, not six, is that right?
We, you know, we've been doing PLCs at six o'clock.
Yes, we have.
Is that what we want to do? We can make that change very easily?
I don't have a strong preference.
Usually feed us.
Yeah. Right. I'm sure I will learn that at some point, and know that consistently now.
At one point in time, I was told, any meeting before six-thirty, we got food, any meeting after six-thirty, we didn't, but then that failed a couple of times.
Okay, so we're going at six o'clock?
And feed us.
Yep.
You have to personally cook that.
I'll do that.
So, the next statement there is the seventy-first annual, that's a tongue twill, seventy-first annual OSBA conference in November. Pretty much everybody has said if they're going to be able to go or not already, and so everybody has rooms that are going and all that. If you read your email from them, they're not going to print out that really nice book that you can look at at the last minute to change your mind about where you're going to go. They expect you to have a smartphone so that you can look at it on your phone. So, somebody's going to go with some old-fashioned paperwork when they go. And so, and then the last thing that you guys are going to see there, it says a retreat discussion, and we were talking, and we put down November eighteenth or December sixteenth, and part of the discussion was, because we've got so much stuff going on, and part of it was a discussion about her evaluation document and other things that we had coming up, and so we would like you guys to look at your calendar, and we didn't want to put it off until, you know, our next PLC meeting would be farther out, so we were seeing if everybody would be willing to do a work session on either the eighteenth of November or the sixteenth of December.
I vote for November.
Either one's fine for me. Is this like a half-day?
I may not be here in December, so.
So, December is concerned that the people may be already out of town?
I'm supposed to be gone in November escorting help Munn, which is in the package area, so I'm out that week, and so.
Okay.
So, I'm out November.
Because the next week is the holiday, so obviously that we're going to lose a couple of weekends there.
You guys are out December.
I'm going to be gone.
It's like two against one.
What about the second year?
Well, so, that is the option. We did, we didn't throw that out, because we knew that potentially that there was a board meeting that week, but again, if, I think that if the other two dates don't work, I don't think there was.
So, what day, did we just throw off?
I just threw off Saturday, the second of December.
Twelve-two?
So, how about, how about we look, and I'll put that as a reminder in the Friday report, and we'll just do a communication via Adriana, so we can see if that works for everybody? Because again, I'm not sure, does everyone have their calendar here that would make that work? So, how about we do that, and then?
So, we're?
So, we're hearing, I'm hearing right now, potentially, December 2nd, or worst case, that we'll go with a November date, knowing that we may have one board member missing at that time.
I can do the second.
Okay.
Okay.
Morning or afternoon or both?
What, yeah?
Morning, afternoon, or both?
I would say probably, I would say we would want to go in the morning to try and do some things to morning, mid-afternoon, like we did last time, and so then the evening would be free, not a whole day.
So, now we get to the consent agenda, and before we vote on it, you want to do the explanation?
Yes, so there is, excuse me here. There is a trip to that PAC conference, which is taking place in Seattle, Washington. It is, the advisor is through Mr. Thistle, and they are going to be gone from November seventeenth to the nineteenth, so you'll see the information on the sheets attached. The backside is also their itinerary of what they're going to be a part of during the conference. So, again, it's just a conference for students up in Seattle, and obviously, that's out-of-state travel, so we just, we wanted to make sure that we, it happens in the next, excuse me, it happens here, coming up in November, while we're on, to get it on to the board agenda.
Do you want me to add a little bit?
Sure, absolutely.
This is model United Nations, so the kids, there's five kids that'll be going up. It's the second time they've been up to Seattle, and it's a regional competition, really, so they're all up there role-playing masters to the model nation, or United Nations. And it's pretty intense, I go for two full days, a lot of really great kids. The kids are planning to ride up on the train, and then I think we're sending a bus up to get the kids over and back, so there is a bus ride back. And I will be taking the luggage separate car.
We have a big luggage bay in our trucks.
How come you always get to go on all the sunsets?
Have you met my wife?
No, okay, I think I have.
She even bowels to you.
So, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay? And so, also, at the back of the consent of the agenda there, that you have a copy of the Board and Superintendent Working Agreements, and that's under the business agenda, and so, once again, I'll let you explain the highlighted.
So, as requested at the last board meeting, the highlighted areas are the changes requested from the first review of the document. On the third page, you will see I did eliminate item number twelve. That actually is a repeat to item number three, which is in the same communications agreement section, so again, it's similar language, so I just, I felt it was already stated, and so we could remove that, item number twelve. And again, this is for, obviously, this first year with me. I think as we go into the next year, we'll bring this back out and go through it, make any changes that we feel is necessary as we work through this first year with this process. So, questions?
You'll notice at the back of it, once we approve this, that we'll all be asked to sign a copy of it, when it's got all the not highlighted, the correction marks in it.
I figured we can do that on the sixteenth, just quickly, before we start the meeting.
So, do I hear a motion to approve our document that we produced here?
I make a motion that we approve the, the Board of Superintendent Working Agreement.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve this document. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous? And thank you. And the next, you get to explain the next document.
So, the next one is a first reading of a policy tied to service animals in district facilities, and specifically, this is for, focused on our students. The district currently does not have a policy as it relates to service animals within the district, and a process for students who may have those service animals, and a lot of this is tied to potentially 504 or students with disability. As I said, this is a first reading, and this is connected to Senate Bill 610, which was focused on what that service animals within schools and school districts. In November, when we come back for a second reading, if, obviously, there are changes to this first reading, we will also bring to you the AR, or what I'm going to call the first draft of the procedures that will align with the policy for students and their families who may want to or look forward to move forward with, to request an approval of having a service animal within, and during the school day within the school. We've also received information from PACE, which is the district's insurance or insurer, and they're giving us recommendations or suggestions as it relates to cleanliness, so there's, you'll see in the policy where it talks about, it's the handler's responsible for it, that they need to be controlled and be trained, so we don't have any issues. And so, there's some pieces that we will also have guidance from PACE that we will embed into the procedures, just in regards to cleanliness, the importance of hygiene with students, and safety procedures as we incorporate those into the RA. Finally, this is, allows us to have oversight in this process. Again, part of this is tied to 504 review, and potentially would be involved in the IEP review with our students that may have have service animals, and really giving us guidance, and then a true approach and process to be able to allow and do that in the district. So, again, some of that is already going on, and we are embedding it into the 504s, but we do want to put this into policy, and then we will, we are beginning to work on an alignment for procedures, so it's crystal clear to families as they move in this direction.
This is, this is an OSBA draft?
Yes, it's actually a combination of OSBA and several other school districts that we looked at, just for just clarity on some things that we, we just felt were important from regards to handling, and that it's the responsibility of the handler or the student, and that we really have those pieces in the policy. You'll see that it doesn't, right now, apply to district employees, that's a different policy that we'll need to look at, so obviously, our focus is students first, and so this is the first draft on the student side, and then we'll obviously need to move forward on the staff and outside as well.
Do we have any idea how many students would be interested in taking advantage of this?
We don't, at this point, I'm looking at Julie, and we're not sure. We do know that potentially, there are some, there's some inquiry from families, and so again, we know that we'll work through that. We do want to have this in place, so as, if and when we get those future, that we do have a plan and procedures to move forward with. So, it's clear for our families.
Are you ready for a motion?
Sure, I was just going to ask.
I would move that we accept policy ING as presented on a first reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of ING draft. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Passes unanimously. All right. Comments by individual board members?
I have a couple of pieces of information. Last time, I mentioned that we were getting mentoring for the high school students going for college and career planning. There was a couple of people that sort of looked like they were interested. If you're interested, I have an information sheet on that, you can pass out. And the fall community youth forum is scheduled for, I keep wanting to say May, October twenty-seventh. It's twelve to one. There'll be an invitation going out this week, but I thought I'd let, you know?
One more, one more time on the date?
October twenty-seventh, it's a Friday.
It's a lunch.
Twelve to one.
They feed you.
And that's all I got.
I think this thing on the service animals, it's amazing, a government document, and only one page, and it covers everything. It's just amazing that it's simple.
Behold.
It took four pages for us to figure out how to work with the superintendent.
Yeah, but reading down the, yeah, just reading through the shady part in the bottom is just, it's very simple. I'm simple, I like simple things, and this is easy to understand, and if it's adopted, there won't be any problem with, shouldn't be any problem with people understanding why you can't bring your cat and your parakeet and that stuff, and your dog is going to help you get from place to place and so on. Well-written, well-written.
Any other comments from board members? I just want to say that there are so many activities going on all the time. I see the students around and stopping in at the schools. We've had lunch at Ash Creek and MES so far.
Correct.
And so, the students have just been wonderful to watch, and so, we're trying to get together for a Wednesday lunch somewhere when our schedule's aligned, so that we can be seen in the different schools. And so, don't panic if you see us having lunch at your school. We're hoping to get around to everybody, and so it's been a lot of fun. So, with that, if nobody has anything else, or one's going twice, we are.